Go on, but anyway.
Probably don't make the effort.
Story for another day. Okay, I am going to slowly open up the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted on the Zoom platform and livestreamed eventually on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. Public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom and must include their full name and address for the public record. The chair will review questions and if appropriate, direct them to a participant for a response. Please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. Again, this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. I also want to notice note that, and I'll say this again, when we get to this part of the agenda that we are having a public hearing tonight, and I will ask anyone, any member of the public who wishes to to provide testimony during the public hearing to let us know that ahead of time with their name, address, and and they will be sworn in along with anybody else that's actually participating, including the applicant. So we'll get to that and I'll refresh that when we get to that point of the agenda. So I'll open by asking for a roll call vote. I guess Cory, you're first.
Evan's here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Okay, well, Cora of the board, we're in open session. Is there any members of the public? Carrie, can you see? I can't see.
Jack just entered as an attendee.
Great. Tracy, can you promote Jack?
Yep, I'll take care of it.
I do not see any public questions or comments yet.
Great. Hi, Jack.
Hi, how are you? Sorry, I'm a little late.
Not a problem. We just did roll call, so you can just say you're here and we'll get rolling.
Jack Creighton here.
Great, thank you very much. And I'll ask everyone to do the pledge of allegiance. Jack, if you could show us your flag, that would be awesome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It doesn't appear that we have anyone here at this point for public comment. So Chris and Jack, one of the things I mentioned is I'll go over the public testimony part of the public hearing that's upcoming at 7:10 PM when we get to that point in our agenda. But otherwise, let's move on to an update on the MBTA ferry service. Chris, if you could just give us a general summary, because we haven't spoken as a board about what's going on, and then Cory and I have both dipped in and out of different conversations, and we want to talk with the board about some next steps. But Chris, if you could kind of tee up the conversation.
So the the MBTA is facing a financial crisis, as I think everyone understands, like all governmental entities are. A lot fewer passengers means a lot less revenue. And what I've decided to do is take a look at their service, that they've already done reductions in in schedules. And again, we're talking for our purposes about the Green Bush Line here, train and the commuter rail and the the boat from Hingham. So there's already been reductions. They are now actively considering the elimination or functional elimination of service, both the ferry and the commuter rail on the Green Bush Line. When I say functional, we haven't seen any specific details, but the conversations that have been passed on to us by our state representative and state senator are such that the reductions on the all the way and on the Green Bush might be so substantial as to function to make the service non-existent anywhere. And one of the most critical challenges that we've heard is that, you know, that they're they're not, you know, you can make anything look like you want it to if you read the parameters. And what they've not done is look at the parameters of commute time and environmental issues, and all those kinds of things on the South Shore. They've simply looked at it, well, do you have cars? Well, yeah, people have cars here. And if you force them into cars, it's going to be my the brain tree splits already a mess. And it just means that traffic will choke Quincy and South Boston and Boston and going west onto 128 to all of those places to the the boat and the integral. In fact, all of the communities along the train line have built planned unit developments around some of the stations, the class of being one of them. And there's there's so many, everyone understands we're in a unique situation that said to take action that could permanently damage or destroy critical commuter services is something that I think everyone's concerned about. So Hull, Hingham, Ghasan, and Situate in particular have gotten together under the auspices of both Senator O'Connor, Representative Muskino, to talk about how we might work together to 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 let the MBTA know this is not okay. That while we understand that reductions of service are what they are, eliminations of service are not okay. They're just not, it's not okay. So we're exploring things on many fronts, including, you know, obviously being plugged into our legislators, monitoring what's going on with the MBTA board, and also the potential to bring us all together on a communication strategy. So it showed we've taken a lead on, and right now we have comments from Hull and Hingham to join in. And I'm just trying to zoom back with circle back, I should say, with Situate to get us all four of us together. You know, a modest package was something that that allow us to, you know, get a website up and get some, get some activity, get some, you know, some public relations assistance to make sure that we're getting our message through to the state, something modest. So I'm hoping that my next week, give you a little more details on that. We say here, I'd like to spend this much money and just, I'd like all of you to, you know, if if we're at that point, give me direction on whether or not to go forward. So at this point, they've been a little vague. And again, I think Diane and Cory could fill in. They've been more meetings than I have on this. And I can, I think that the time's coming, and maybe as soon as next week, where the board needs to adopt some kind of a letter and say, hey, this is not okay for all these reasons. And we need to find a way to engage our residents to make sure that the MBTA knows it's not okay.
So I'll just jump in a little bit in terms of trying to frame some some of our next steps, and then Cory can fill in a lot of the details of what he's taken away. So one of the things that the other communities are doing is having a letter from the select board to, and I still have to figure out to whom, whether it's to the Secretary of Transportation, or the MBTA board, or all of the above. And I'm sure it'll be CC'd to everybody. But each town is asking their select board to approve a letter that basically says, you can't do this, and, you know, articulating the the top reasons why, which I think if we enter into a communications kind of contract with with a professional company to help us kind of articulate those those items, you know, not the least of which is, you know, economic development, these transit oriented oriented development and affordable housing, the environment, the the infrastructure, and the investments that have been made over the past two decades in public transportation, and and just kind of turning your back on those. I mean, it's just, to me, it's an absolute disaster. But, you know, we're all trying to be, give the same message, but also communicate some of our unique issues with that. And Cory pulled out of the master plan that 33% of working folks in Cohasset work in Boston. So and I think, you know, I don't know the numbers of how many of them take public transportation, but my guess is it's a significant portion of them, because, you know, commuting into Boston as somebody that does it is is really not not ideal. So a couple of things, we're, we'll talk next week about what the parameters of a of a communications plan might be with our neighbors, what a website would be, and is that going to be functioning for the public? And that's the other piece. There's the piece of the board sending a letter, but then how can we get the public to take action? And how can we get information out to them so that they pick up the phone and they call the MBTA and they leave messages? So all of that needs to kind of come together. I did do a draft letter, which I'll share after this meeting. I was waiting till a meeting that we had today at four o'clock or whatever time it was, before I added some meat to it, but I think I'll just circulate it and have everybody do some input. And then when we meet with the communications team, assuming that goes forward, you know, we can get the salient points. There is a couple of key dates. The next meeting of the MBTA Finance Board, F has a bunch, an acronym like everything else in government, they're meeting on November 2, and they are at that point going to be presenting their plan going forward. And then there's going to be a public comment period through December. I think it's December 2, at which time a decision or a, you know, they'll finalize and take a vote on on it. So between November 2 and December 2 is going to be the real public input time. But in the meantime, we would like to get a select board letter out as early as next week. Cory, you want to fill in some blanks?
Yeah, sure. Just to kind of reframe it a little bit for for the community. And if you haven't heard of this, I mean, it was in the Mariner, it wasn't, you know, on on in the Globe. And this is how it affects Cohasset is is there are two things. One is the commuter rail, and one is the ferry that goes from Hull or Hingham. The commuter rail is something that's not going to be is really not, they're not really talking about canceling it, but as Chris mentioned, severely reducing, you know, trains. So specifically taking away weekend service and eliminating midday service. So basically, you'll have a couple of trains in the morning, a couple of trains in the afternoon, and everyone will be smushed basically into those couple of trains. On the ferry side, it's a very real possibility that the ferry will just be canceled outright. And that includes Hingham, that includes Hull, you know, the one at Charleston, doesn't really matter to us. But, you know, including the ones that go to the airport, you know, and, you know, both these things are increasingly vital to our town. And as as Chairman Diane said, you know, 33% of families, you know, when we, when the master plan polled, 33% of people work in Boston are connected to Boston. And I think that's only increased over time. We have a lot of young families that have moved out of Boston and into our community that were taking the rail. I know equal numbers of people that are on the rail or the ferry. Us as a board, speaking together is going to be very powerful, but I can't stress enough to everyone who's listening, that it's really the volume of voices. The MBTA is thinking that, oh, we have cars, it doesn't matter to us, it does. And they're not going to realize that unless we talk. So there's kind of two things, there's two ways to kind of get your comments in front of everybody. One is you can actually call them. I will read the number now, but you know, I will, 857-368-1655. I'll also post that on Facebook, we'll put it everywhere. You can leave a voicemail. Voicemails are actually played at these meetings live. So it's a really good way. If you have a story about why this boat is important to you, please call and share it. You can also email publiccomment@dot.state.ma.us. Again, we'll post this again, where you can email the board and let them know this is important. The deadline we have here, we really want to get whatever we want to say out into them by November 2. That's really kind of the the date we've been given as the point where decisions will start happening. And what's really interesting about this is that these cuts, whatever they make, aren't going to happen tomorrow. They're going to happen spring of next year or summer of next year. So we may be facing the scenario where we are reopening, we are returning to Boston, we're returning to our normal lives, and then in the middle of that process, the boat or the train goes away. And that's the message we're trying to get, is that we know it's tough right now, but taking these things away next summer is really going to hurt, especially the communities like ours that have, as Chris said, built, you know, near the train station or Hingham, that has built stuff near near the ferry. These are part of the culture of our town, and our town relies on these to survive. So if you can, please reach out directly, you can, to the two things I mentioned, there's also a citizen website called savetheferry.org, run by Citizen and Hull. You can sign up for updates, and you can, you know, a lot of the information on how to contact is there. Please reach out. I know a lot of people that take the service. And if I got all the people that I know, as well as all the people they knew to write, I think we could really make a difference here. So again, please spend the time to do that if if you think this is important the way that I do.
Yeah. Again, I think in the municipal message, and that'll be the focus of the draft that I'll circulate and we'll talk about next week, is is really, to me, just to, it's kind of throwing the baby away with the bathwater. It's just silly, because we've invested so much as a as a Commonwealth and a and a municipality, and of course, businesses and individuals and making choices to live here. And Cory mentioned a call that came into the MBTA Finance Board meeting yesterday from a woman who, guess what, people don't necessarily commute early in the morning and late at night. It's not always a nine to five structure. So you take away midday service, what about the nurses that start, you know, that work at MGH that start at three, three o'clock shift? So it's really, you know, just impossible to believe that this can happen. And I think the the more we, you know, the more evidence we put out there, and the more people weigh in on it, the greater likelihood of making some accommodations or being at least part of the conversation about what it might look like. Carrie?
I want to echo the frustrations here that both Diane and Cory shared. This is a disaster for our community and for the South Shore community. And, you know, as someone who parks in Boston several times a week, or at least I did in the before times, we don't have the room for this amount of cars in Boston for commuting. So I could see this being a disaster at all levels, not just for our community, but for the city itself. There there just isn't capacity for that type of parking there. I also really like Chris's suggestion of having a unified front and a communication strategy. I know that there's been a lot of chat about this on social media and online. I've seen a few different petitions out there. I would really like for us to be able to figure out the most effective way possible to be kind of all hands on deck with our four towns, especially, and get the communities together and be able to really have a grassroots movement here, because I think there's enough power from all of us citizens in these four towns to really make a difference and have our voice be heard. So I'm looking forward to doing that.
Great. Jack?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, good. I think we should not ignore the impact for medical services. So many people go into Boston for medical services, and frequently, by nature, I mean, many seniors can't can no longer drive. They can't get there easily. People who have a medical issue frequently can't drive. And that's a huge, huge part of, be very difficult to get to those places. The other thing is with parking, there's not enough parking in Boston. Back in the days before we had the trains, you would literally go to the MBT, I mean, the trolley stops, and for blocks around, people would be parking on residential streets. So I think we do need to do that, but let's certainly not forget the influential part of our population, which is seniors and those needing medical care.
Thanks, Jack. And just before I go to Paul, somebody brought up today, which I never thought about, like, especially in this environment right now, and probably through the winter, at least, the boat is actually a safe place, a safe public transportation opportunity, because you can be outside, you know, for people that have any kind of compromised health issues. And there is a huge outside boat culture. I know that for sure. Paul?
So a couple of things with with the transportation is is key for these towns on the South Shore. If you look at just the sheer number of cars, like everyone was saying, the US Department of Transportation has limited the number of parking spots in Boston. This has been a constant battle with the City of Boston and the Department of Transportation at the at the federal level. So there's already a limit on how many parking spaces are available in Boston. The other thing is, we've built an unbelievable rapid rail system to the South Shore, not just to the Green Bush, but all over the South Shore. This is a means to get people to work, to doctors' offices, to go to museums, and all the things that are part of Boston. And we've put in not just where the train is, but infrastructure around the train for businesses. I mean, if if you shut down the the train, what's going to happen to, you know, what we have, where is built on 3A for for, you name it, Situate, Cohasset, Hingham, these are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of jobs. The the other, from the point of view of length of time, I guarantee you there's going to be a vaccine probably in within the year, and it's going to be distributed. And this is a, yeah, it's a, it's a hell of a time. And it's a hell of a time for commuting and living, trying to live at home, and trying to get your work done without commuting in. Once there's control of the epidemic, you'll be able to go in. You look at the two major studies of and out, if you look at New York City, the subway, okay, they've opened up the subway, and there's a fair number of people that do not have cars in New York City, use the subway. And the numbers of the of the COVID-19 in the city are dramatically low, even with opening up of the subway. So it is, if it's done properly, it is a safe means of transportation. Emirates Air did the same thing. They looked at the number of people on the plane, contact tracing, they tested randomly. There is a very low incidence of transmission on Emirates Air, and they travel long distances. The the location of where the person is is more is more a concern than being on the plane. So if if it's done properly, transportation can be done. So this is a, it's going to be a hump to get over, but we can't dismiss the fact that we have a exquisite, brand new rapid rail system in the entire Southeast with a boat to go with it, that is a high-speed boat, limiting parking problems, allowing people to get in at just about any time of day. So I am very upset with the fact they would even consider this.
And can I add one more thing to just the overall discussion is that the one thing that the the MBTA made very clear, and this was brought up in the meeting, is that whatever they get rid of is not coming back. They're looking at this as permanence, because, you know, if you take a bunch of train trains off the rail, and you sell them or you mothball them, and you lay some people off, this isn't something that can get restarted. So if it goes away, it's not just going to come back the next year. This is something that's going to affect us for, you know, a long, long time. Sorry, Carrie.
Very. One other thing I think we need to bring up is the huge economic impacts of this. I mean, it's not just commuters, it's not just people going for medical care. A lot of people go into Boston because they have the ability to use public transportation and going to restaurants and sporting events and concerts. And I think it's going to be, take a huge economic toll on the city of Boston to lose that many people going to the city so much. So this is something that I think could reverberate across, especially with Boston. And, you know, we're seeing them struggle a lot right now with restaurants and a lot of things in the city. But I actually see this having a really detrimental economic impact on all of these towns and cities that fall, you know, on on the train line and with the boat.
So just in summary, I think we're all on the same page. If I could, I think next Tuesday, I would like to be able to approve a letter that we'll send out on behalf of the board. And Chris will be able to present us, if I understand right, with with, you know, an approval opportunity for a communications plan. In the meantime, I would ask if 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 somebody would be willing to make a motion that we, you know, just kind of affirm our position that we want to fight this at every way, we want to build as much evidence and and grassroots support as we can, and just give Chris in consultation with myself as chair, the ability to to sort of represent the town and start getting as many things in motion as we can that we can discuss at our next meeting. And I'm going to ask Cory to be my backstop, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that the Cohasset Select Board unanimously votes to move forward to maintain our public transportation infrastructure, and to vigorously do whatever steps are necessary to mount public support for the for our policy.
Second, great. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Evan's aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Good, thank you. Thanks, Jack. That was a great motion. All right, we're going to move on. Next up on our agenda is is a couple of appointments. And I believe Mr. Cooney is here. So why don't we just take, I don't think anyone representing the Cohasset Cultural Councils here. So why don't we just start with that? There are a number of spots open on the Cohasset Cultural Council. We have three applications. So if somebody would like to make a motion to appoint those people, and I'll have you note that there's a Carrie Thompson in the mix, who is not K E R I, select board member, Carrie Thompson. Sad to know there's another one of you out there.
I mean, I'm happy to have another Carrie Thompson involved.
And what's the time limit on the appointment?
The appointments are three years.
I make a motion, we appoint to the Cohasset Cultural Council Lisa Gilbert, Barbara Ren, Carrie Thompson, and Amanda Volker for a three-year term.
Before I ask for a second, Chris, did you have something to add?
I was just going to tell you the chart that Mr. Cooney is up, but his picture's not working, but his video, his audio seems to.
Great. We'll get to him in one second. Yep. Is there a second on the Cohasset Cultural Council? Carrie, great, thank you. And we'll do a roll call vote. Jack, you there? We'll get to him. Cory?
I, Cory Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay, so the those four members are approved. We'll just give Jack an abstention. And and so Mr. Cooney is here, he can hear us, and we can hear him. Put his videos on.
Yeah, it doesn't have the video on, but are you there?
George, are you there?
George, come next door, you get a hop on mine.
We would love to hear from you if you're there.
Call me, I'll put you on speakerphone.
So George is currently serving as our rep to the South Shore Regional School District, and this is a reappointment position. And we'll give him a few more seconds. Is he running to, Jack, is he at your front door yet?
I don't know. I'll I'll open my window and yell.
He's actually calling me right now. Hold on. Hi, George, you're on speaker.
Hi, Cory. Good evening, one and all.
Hello, can can anyone hear George here?
Yes.
Yeah, can you hear me all?
We can hear you. We'd love to just have you give us a summary of your work with the regional district in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Happy to do that. It's been a wonderful experience of working with some people that have really stepped up, especially over this past summer. The programs that they've developed and implemented to successfully deal with the pandemic have just been top shelf, really a good job. And I'm just happy to be part of that whole team. Sorry about the echo. And as far as representing the town, it's been great. You know, Chris, you and I have had a couple of brief conversations. And I hope you guys will consider me for the next period that I'd be happy to represent the town.
Great. Well, we appreciate your work over the past couple of years and your willingness to do it again. So thank you very much. I will call for a motion if somebody would like to make one.
I move that we appoint George Cooney as our rep for the South Shore Regional School District.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack, you're muted.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Cory Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you again, George, for your willingness to serve.
Are you very welcome. And thank you very much for my vote of confidence.
All right, good luck. Keep us posted. Chris, that does remind me, and I'm going to stall a little bit, because we have a hearing notice for 7:10, and I'll, it'll probably take me two minutes just to kind of tee up the the public portion of that. But, you know, there are a number of people that we appoint to positions that aren't as in the trenches in Town Hall, if you will, including our rep to the South Shore Regional School District. And, you know, we learned a couple of weeks ago, the the Massport Advisory Council, and it's probably worth us getting, having some meeting when we don't have a ton of things to do, which I think will probably be in the spring. But we, it would be great to bring in people that are on some of these committees that don't interact with us on kind of a municipal day-to-day rotation, and just learn a little bit more about what they're doing. And with respect to the Cohasset Cultural Council, I always use this opportunity to say, that's where I started being involved with the town when I first moved here. And it's, it actually works under the auspices of the Massachusetts Cultural Council. So there's, there's, they sort of prescribe the terms and and how how they rotate as opposed as opposed to our standard terms. Like they, it's just, it's just a little bit of a different process from the state. But they, they're a re-granting organization, so they get a per capita sum of money each year that they send, that they review grants from cultural and historical and arts organizations in town. One of the pieces of that, and I think I brought it up to Corey and/or Carrie at one point, is economic development. And there is a program through the Massachusetts Cultural Council called Cultural Districts Designation. And the Social Arts Center was involved in trying to get Cohasset designated as a as a cultural district, which would be like, let's say, from Sawyer Street, where the library and the the senior center is, all the way through town and through the Harbor Walk, and then maybe ultimately into the harbor area. Because it has to be like a defined thing, and that that kind of just dropped off. And, you know, it's, this is what happens a lot when you have organizations and businesses in the community just trying to do their own day-to-day operations. But as we look at economic development, Elm Street Corridor development, it's probably worth reaching out to members of the Cohasset Cultural Council and getting their, you know, getting their input and seeing if the cultural district designation is something that we should look at going forward. So it's, I think it's one of those programs where you get, you know, you you get, you get the sign, right, that you're a cultural district. There's no necessary funding related to it. But it does open you up to, you know, a different kind of perspective on what you can do in terms of economic development and the arts. So, okay, so that was a good stall. So before I walk us in or get us open.
Diane, did you want to do the extension of hours for the restaurants?
Yes, premises is actually.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. And I was stalling. Yeah.
I was wondering why you were stalling, yeah.
I'm sorry about that. Somebody needs to just, you know. Yes, Chris, do you want to?
Yeah, so we have, I can ask Jen and Pam and Chief Sylvia and Quigley, if he wants to join us. The restaurant working group has been talking with our local business owners about this. It's been incredibly successful enterprise, these outside, you know, outside extensions. And I know that the conversation is, it's just they all expire technically on Halloween. The question is, how about extending them? And I, we were talking about it today, and I think Chief Sylvia was following up with one of the owners. So I don't know if any of you have an update on how much longer the recommendations for the board to extend this.
Very, very quickly, I think Jen outlined it in her, in the memo that she sent out. But where we stand right now is that the two that we had somewhat of a concern about were obviously Five South Main and Dooley's, where they're on public roads, and we were worried about the weather coming through. Jen has reached out to both of them, and they have both requested that they be allowed to continue operations till the first of December at this point, which is actually shorter than what the governor has authorized. The governor has authorized us to go right through until the end of the state of emergency. But I think Five South Main and Dooley's are looking for, to extend through December 1st. And I believe that the other ones, because they're actually on private property, I don't think that will be as much of a concern. We're talking about the Corner Stop, Atlantica, Wendy's Kitchen, being the other three. So I think that really the two that we were talking about and the and the ones that, you know, we'd like to see you extend this, extend everybody. But that's what they're, they're asked for is December 1st at this time.
And the, we, we do have to take a vote on the three that are on private property, which is Atlantica, Wendy's, and and Corner Stop. Is there any reason why we wouldn't just extend all of them through December 31st?
Hey, I just address, I was muted and I couldn't turn my video on. This is Jen Orm. I don't know if it's okay if I just address a couple of the items that the chief just mentioned.
Please do, Jen. Thanks.
Thank you so much. So actually Atlantica is broken down, so they're already have returned their, their, the barriers and are just focusing on inside. The private property want to go until the end of December. They want to extend the full 60 days. And but Dooley's and Five South specifically wrote letters that they just wanted to stay open until December 1. And I think that's because they're right in the, in the right of way.
And, I mean, right, part of me thinks like, what if December is beautiful and it's 60-degree weather? You know, and and there is an opportunity that for them to stay open till December 31st. We might as well license it and they can decide to, or approve it, and they can decide to break down whenever they want. You know, the only other issue would be what happens if we have a snowstorm in early February? Or, you know, I mean, we could have it in November, too. So I don't know from, from chief, the chief's point of view, how that might impact if we were to have a snowstorm, like even tomorrow.
Well, Madam Chairperson, we have, we've already gotten into discussions with the folks at Five South Main, and I will be stopping in to talk to the folks at Dooley's and DPW. We may modify where the barriers are. We may do a couple of other things, and we need to come up with a game plan just for snow. So the game plan is in the works.
Okay.
Hopefully, we will report back to you in the next week or two, and hopefully they won't, the snow won't fly in the next week or two. I'll say that with a smile on my face. And as long as that doesn't happen, I think we're okay. But everybody, all the people that are involved, being the, the restaurant owners and DPW, Chief Quigley, everybody's in conversations right now, so we'll get back to you as soon as we have a game plan for that.
Great, Corey?
Yeah, the other thing I want to mention is that the Cohasset Economic Task Force has been discussing, having discussions with the Cohasset Chamber of Commerce and a few other local businesses about having some very lightweight, very local, you know, events in December. So I kind of, you know, I hate to close the door on them and then have something happen and have them come back in front of us. So so I would also support the idea of if we can just extend everybody to December 31st and, you know, deal with the challenges as they come up would be a better way to go.
Agreed. Any other comments from the board? Paul?
So many, many moons ago, I was down in St. Petersburg when it was Florida, when it was cold, and they had outdoor heaters, and it was quite effective. So I I think there's lots of ways to figure out how to keep the restaurant open in the, in the open area. And if it's a mild winter, I agree, if we can extend it, we can always ask for a state emergency or a public safety addition in the future to say you can't have them on the road right now because we have to clear the snow.
That's it. Any other, any other comments from the board or from our guests? Jim, Attorney Lampke, thank you.
Just to be sure that everyone's aware, the, the length of time that you can approve these temporary changes is as long as 60 days after the governor's emergency ends. Or you could do it for such short a time as you want. So you certainly could do it through December 31st. And if you see in December that it looks like January, February going to be warmer weather or there's a need or desire to do that, you can always renew the expiration period. Technically, it's 60 days after the governor, the maximum is 60 days after the governor declares the emergency over.
Great, thank you. Jack?
I, all in favor of keeping them open as long as they can. I've been in areas where those heater do work, and I've seen people out recently, and they're all bundled up, but they're having a good time outside. The only issue that I, I really don't have the answer to is, you know, if there's a snow emergency, are any of those barriers in such a spot where they clearly can't be moved immediately? Or maybe, maybe they can. That I don't know. That would be my only concern.
Great. All right, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we extend the premises of businesses for the following businesses per Governor Baker's COVID-19 Order Number 50, extending the outdoor business use for Mr. Dooley's Irish Pub, Nine Depot Court, Corner Stop Eatery, 235 Hall Street, Nugent's Kitchen, 156 King Street, Lenny's Hideaway, Eight Stage Coach Way, and Five South Main, Five South Main, until December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, or a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Great, all right. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Now, sorry, sorry I delayed us. Just, we are going to read a hearing notice, a public hearing notice in a minute. But I, we do have a couple of the applicant and and his attorney, who we will need to promote into the meeting. And this is for any of the members of the public who are interested in providing public comment and testimony today on, in this public hearing notice. If you would be, you would type your name and your address into the question and answer period, question and answer section down below so that we can promote you into the meeting. And I'll ask when we swear everybody in that if you do plan to make public comment, and this is not for board members, but for any member of the public, that you, that, that you also swear in when we, when we collectively swear in the presenters for the evening. So with that, it's after 7:10 p.m., which is okay. I'm going to read the hearing notice. This is a public hearing notice of the Cohasset Select Board. A public hearing will be held virtually via Zoom webinar on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, at 7:10 p.m. The Cohasset Select Board, as acting as Liquor Licensing Authority, LLA, will hold a public hearing to consider the application of Sajin Enterprises LLC, DBA Cohasset Wine and Spirits, for a change of location from 2729 South Main Street to 807 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The manager is Deborah Sajin. The license premises is approximately 960 square feet, consisting of one room. The public is invited to offer public input and ask questions regarding this application in writing by emailing jorim@cohassetma.org in advance of the public hearing and can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform are below, and will also be on the select board's agenda posted on the town's website, cohassetma.org, on the calendar section located on the, on the bottom of the page. Having read that hearing notice into the record, I would ask for a roll call vote to open the hearing, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson here.
Great. And I would just ask for, just let me see if anybody's, if any of the presenters, the petitioners could kind of turn their video on and join our meeting.
But Diane, you have Attorney Sullivan is up on the screen now. I believe his client has also now been promoted to a panelist.
Okay.
There's a Mr. McGregor in the audience. I'm not sure if he's just watching. I didn't get that he wants to make any comments at this time, so, but he's in the, he's the only other person in the audience right now.
Great. Mr. McGregor, you said you are the only member of the audience. I hate to single you out, but if you are planning to provide any testimony, I ask that you just type your name in below. If not, we'll, we'll go forward. Mr. Sullivan, welcome. Thank you for being here. Is your applicant present? And because I would like to visualize Mr. and Mrs. Sajin if they're here, and also just have us swearing them in.
They are present, and I suspect they are struggling with.
They're like me. It sounds like they might have, yeah.
Me, too. There we go.
Good evening. How are you?
Very good.
Okay, anybody that's planning to provide testimony, including Mr. and Mrs. Sajin, if you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will give this evening is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, I'll turn it over to you to present your, your comments and testimony and also, and walk us through any exhibits that we will be looking at this evening.
I will do my best. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board. On behalf of my clients, the licensees of an all-alcoholic beverage license, we would like to change the location. There's sort of a long history with this. Deborah Sajin is the manager of this all-alcoholic beverage license dating back to 2014. Originally, my clients created 2729 South Main Street as Cohasset Wine and Spirits LLC. They, when the lease was not renewed at that location, beginning in 2014, my clients began looking at a site at 809 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, where we now seek to relocate their business. My client is now the owner of that premises. They originally went through site plan review with the planning board for that premises back in 2015, and they got a unanimous affirmative vote from the committee. They, they're, the board rejected that site and did not renew their license, the Board of Selectmen, that is, and litigation ensued. We then found ourselves back here before the board, after successful appeal by the Sajins, back in December of 2019, when I appeared before you that long ago. I I understand and acknowledge there was skepticism about the site from the board, and we suggested it would be appropriate to renew our site plan review and see if we could address any concerns before the planning board, because our site plan approval obviously had expired. We brought all of the licenses retroactively current. My clients paid those fees, even though they were not able to use those licenses for all those period of years. And then we went through the planning board process. After appearing before you in December, my client submitted a renewed application for site plan review with the planning board in February. Of course, something significant happened shortly thereafter with the COVID emergency and so forth. So my clients did not get a decision from the planning board until August of this year. Should have available to you a copy of the site plan approval from the board, which we did submit through Mr. Lynn's office belatedly today, and I apologize. And the planning board, again, unanimously approved this site for my client's proposed retail use. And we then, in August of '27, filed with this honorable board for an application to the site. As the chair indicated, this site is 965 square feet, one room. The, that's the structure. The premises itself is 13,000 square feet, a little bit more than that. When we submitted to the board, the planning board, that is, there was a traffic study by Van Ass on behalf of the applicant, and that was reviewed by the planning board's consulting engineer and approved. Since 2015, we have redefined the driveway entrance shared with the abutter at the nursery at 805 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. We've expanded the parking area to provide for five spaces, including accessible parking space with a ramp. The driveway entrance has a 30-foot radius on both sides painted white, one entrance lane, two exit lanes, and a double yellow line.
Mr. Sullivan, can I just stop you right there? Chris, do we have a site plan that we could bring up to look at while he's walking through?
Yes, we do. Let me see where it is. I have tons of documents teed up, and of course, that was not right on my fingertips.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
I have it available if you want to.
Yeah, the whole board, I know, I sent it out to the entire board earlier.
Right.
So.
Do we have sharing powers? If anybody that has.
Yeah, you do. I have it. So do you want to see the decision or the plan itself?
I'd like to see the plan as he's talking about, you know, parking radiuses. I just want to kind of understand what.
Hold on a second. Here it is. I will now share it.
Thanks. Sorry if I broke your cadence, but hopefully you will.
No, it's all the same show. No problem.
Exactly. This way, this will help us. And maybe if you could zoom a little bit, I assume on the right is what the proposed.
That is correct, and, and I know that this isn't ideal, but it is what it is, so.
Yep.
To the right of the, the property line is the proposed easement that we will share with the nursery. So there are one means of ingress and two means of egress. And so there's a right-hand turn lane to the far, well, if you're looking at to your left, and then there's one to, to exit to the right, and there's only one to the far right in order to enter, enter. And that's over shared parking, shared easement with, with the nursery. And there are five parking spaces as indicated on the plan. We now have a ramp, there will be deliveries to the rear of the property that will be at non-peak hours. As I alluded to, there was a parking study done by Van Ass, it was the traffic study, excuse me, done by Van Ass, and there was nominal, because of the size of the store, the, what, what the Sajins envision here is sort of a high-end liquor store, because obviously there's five parking spaces, and it's only 965 square feet. So this is going to be a high-end, what Van Ass was looking at by their projections was really nominal increase in traffic, and obviously the roadway there can handle it. And so with the stop sign, the yellow double line, we believe that we're going to be able to safely get folks in and out of the site, as happens now for the, for the landscape business, and we don't expect that the traffic here will be, will be greatly increased.
I just quickly mentioned, on this map, for those watching at home, 3A is on the lower, lowest portion of the map and doesn't show.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Chris, I just want to make sure we mark this as Exhibit A.
Yep, there you go, thank you.
Sure. And so, you know, it's a pretty straightforward site. We think that the improvements that we have made that have incorporated into the site plan review assist us in making this a better location so that the Sajins can get about running their business there. Something that obviously they've done, wanted to do for a long time now that they've, they've owned this property now for going on six years. So that, that is what we have, and we, you know, are required to meet sightlines. One of the conditions of the decision, if I can oppose upon Mr. Senior again, by the planning board, is there are expected improvements to 3A, and we have to work with DOT to incorporate anything we do with what their expectations are, and obviously we will do that. So, you know, there's been a long history here. It's sort of an older and dilapidated structure, and my clients want to clean it up, use it as a vibrant business, and do it in a responsible way. Mrs. Sajin is here with me, but I think as this board knows, the Sajins have operated package stores in Massachusetts for a number of years, including Yogi's Liquors in Marshfield for a better part of two decades, and they, they look forward to operating here and having a second location. They do have ample resources, in fact, they still have the refrigeration and shelving that they had back when they worked at 2729 South Main, that was owned by them, and they still have that available to them. I'd be happy to have any, any questions for either me or the Sajins.
Yep, do the Sajins want to make a, make a statement before we ask the board for questions, or?
I fear we, oh, there's Mr., there's Yogi, Yogi, I don't know if you or Deborah want to add anything, you folks have been through all the hearings.
No, no, all things fine with us, you are the person to everything.
Thank you, all right, I'll ask board members for questions. And I, you know, I just like this, this is a new hearing, and I, you know, would like us to stick to the plans and the, the description of the business that Mr. Sullivan gave us, and let's talk through that, and so what, what am I just, I'll just jump in, not seeing any other hands. I'd like to understand sort of the timetable that is being proposed for getting the business operational and what kind of, you know, physical plant work and site work would need to happen.
Well, I, I will defer to, to Mr. Sajin, he's been ready to go for quite some time. Could you tell the board how long you think it'll take you and Mrs. Sajin to have this store operational? When the, when, when you get your approvals?
Yes, sir.
How long before you can have the, all the work done, and what work will you be doing to the interior of the premises in order to operate?
I'm going to start immediately working on it till as soon I got approval, because I am in rush to move open it.
And, and how long do you expect it to take, Mr. Sajin?
Actually, it should not take that long, but still it depend upon weather and people they are working its towns, because normally if you start working for, oh, I am going to finish this job in 10 days or 15 days, it takes two months or half. So you know the circumstance, but I want to open it as soon as possible.
Fair to say no more than 60 days, Mr. Sajin, from the time you get your approvals?
Maybe, or should we, because nothing more, we are not going to do any major work over there, so it's just going to be some kind of dressing and some kind of ramp, so it should not take that long, but still it depend upon how sometime go for it, it should not take that long, I think so.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? Okay, get them all, I'm going to go in order of my screen, which is Paul Schubert.
So the, the transfer of the license, has there been any problems with the current license holder? With, with any liquor license violations?
Nope.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Just a question on the location here, obviously there are a couple other liquor package stores not that far from here. Are you confident that you think this location would be a successful spot for your business?
Yes.
I will also add, if it's all right, Ms. Thompson, that I think Mr. Sajin has testified in the past and can certainly elaborate. He has scoured the Cohasset area looking for a location.
Right.
He worked very hard to find this one.
Corey?
Yeah, I think, I think my question is, is same lines of Carrie, I mean, I'm not, I guess I'm, I'm questioning the need for it in that location, I mean, we have a, a very large, established liquor store there. Right, it's right across from Curtis, and I know Malanies does some, some beer and wine selling as well. So I'm just, I, my only hesitation is, is, you know, is that really what we, is that really the place we need this? But I'm, I'm certainly receptive to the idea that Cohasset isn't the most geographically friendly area for, you know, business in general, really, so I'm, I'm taking that into consideration.
Chris, I know Jack has a question, but did you want to pull up the map?
Yeah, I have a map, I have a map showing the location that our GS department prepared today, so if you give me just a second, I'll share that.
And then we, just, just for the record, this would be marked as Exhibit B?
Oh, okay.
So Chris, the way that, that, that is scaled on the screen, it, it makes it hard to see the bottom of that. Okay, great.
This shows, this shows the, the, the purple are the two all-alcohol off-premises licenses or package store licenses that exist. That's one right there and one right there. The other three blue dots are the wine and malt off-premises, you can see those locations here. Malanies is one that, it's like, Evan's just mentioned, and this little, this red dot here is the proposed location of the applicant's store.
Great, so if we could just leave that up, and then Jack, if you want to ask your questions.
Yeah, I just have a comment, this has been a long and contentious series of hearings, and I understand some of the initial concerns about traffic and the location, and do we want to take, you know, kind of our last liquor license and put it across the street from Curtis, and I understand what Corey was referring to. But that being said, you know, enough is enough, we've been a long, long time at this, and, and I would strongly be in favor of moving forward and, and welcoming, welcoming a, a new establishment to Cohasset.
Thank you, Corey?
If, if I may follow up, I mean, I'd just love to hear from the applicants. You know, I'm only seeing this, you know, from, from my point of view, I mean, what's attractive to that location? Why do you think this is a good location to, to serve the town from?
I'm not sure if Mr. Sajin is there. Mr. and Mrs. Sajin, could you talk about the attractiveness of the location? I would also ask that you also talk to them about what makes your place unique from the other nearby package stores? As I understand it, you're viewing this, yours as a specialty high-end store.
Yes, sir, we are going to keep some good brand of wines and all as I used to have in over there in the center of Cohasset, but there is no, we try to find location everywhere we could not find, but this is the right location, so people they can come easily in and out, who are going forward over there. And it won't be, if you have to go to Cohasset, Curtis Liquor, you have to cross the road, and then again, you have to come back to. So it is easy in and out for a customer store.
And, and not for purposes of contentiousness, but I would just say that as far as my clients are concerned, they're the holder of the liquor license, it's not really a new license.
Correct.
And, and, and they have done everything they can to find an appropriate location.
Any other comments from the board? You know, I think one, one of our, you know, responsibilities is to, and, and the reason that these licenses come before the select board is because we have to consider the, the the public good and the public service and, and making sure that we're at, I, I am concerned that there's so many licenses kind of concentrated in one area on 3A, but I also recognize, you know, the challenges, there's really only two places that a, any license could be held in town. One is on 3A, and the other is in the Village on, on, on South Main Street, so there aren't a lot of options at this point, just geographically, and you know, I, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest, I mean, I, I, you know, this is the, the hearing we've had on this, I mean, we've seen some things, and I appreciate hearing from, from the Sajins here, I, I wouldn't be against having a vote on this, maybe in our next meeting where we can kind of digest what was said in this hearing, and then we can, we can make a decision as a board, if that's an option for us, just so I can digest this material and we can have a discussion after we've kind of, you know, thought more about what we heard from the Sajins and their representation.
That, that is, that is definitely an option, is to continue the hearing and deliberate at a future meeting, I, one of the things.
I'm not, I was, I mean, do we have to continue the hearing, can we close the hearing and then have a, or, or continue the hearing, but we wouldn't have public comment any further, is that?
I, I would, I would have to ask Attorney Lampke, one of my concerns is that there, there is no public testimony here, and I don't know whether that's just a function of what's going on in the world, and it's a little harder to, but, but my point was really trying to address public, public needs, public concerns, and thus the reason for public hearing. Jim, can we continue the hearing and, and have additional public comment or, or not?
Yes, you could, it's a choice of the board, you could close the hearing tonight for public comment and deliberate at a, at a future meeting, or you can continue the, the hearing to a future date and resume testimony from the public, testimony from the Sajins, information from Attorney Sullivan. In the meantime, you may want to do a site visit yourselves, walk the site, and I'm sure Mr. Sullivan would be willing to arrange for that to take place so that you can get a good feel for the site.
I, I'm also sensitive, and I'll ask my colleagues to weigh in as well, I, I am sensitive with time, you know, I, this, this has gone on, I don't want to belabor anything, but I, but I also, I do feel like I would, I would love to have another opportunity for any public comments to, to come in, because, again, this, this is why we're hearing this, is, is for the public and, and what's in the best interest of the public, so. My inclination right now is to maybe continue the hearing to a date, set up a site visit if the board thinks that would be of help, or, and, and try to resolve this as soon as possible. Paul?
So I've done a site visit also, it looks like there is no public comment here, and it was legally posted, so.
It was.
I, I defer to the legal aspect and opinion whether or not do you need to continue it just for public comment if there's no public comment currently. The other comment that I'd like to make is that we are very limited geographic of where you can place a, a liquor store or liquor license. And that's one of the problems where I, I think there, there is one other location, I think it's up on Beechwood that is technically zoned for business, but we're limited on where we can put businesses, and the numbers of plots that are available, number of locations, it's, it's extraordinarily slim. And I think I'd be reasonable, I, I would be willing to go ahead with the, with the vote tonight. That's all.
Carrie, any comments, or we good?
I, I, I think I agree with Paul here and Jack, I'd be okay moving forward tonight, although I wish I knew a little bit more about how the public felt about this. I also am aware, even though I'm a little hesitant about the location, I also echo the sentiments that I know that there aren't that many locations, so. It's been postponed a lot, I'm aware of the time, I, I, I assume that they're eager to get going with the business, so I would be okay moving ahead tonight, but if we do think that the public will participate more, maybe in a next meeting, I'd also be okay postponing.
So, Jack?
Yeah, I mean, I'm very sympathetic to, you know, Corey's thoughts about putting it off for a little bit, but it, I, I respectfully would, I agree generally with Corey. But I think at this place, if there was public comment, they've had plenty of chances, this has gone on forever, and at a certain point, there's an undue burden, I think, on legitimate business people looking to move forward. They've jumped through a lot of hoofs, hoofs? You know, you know, the things that come through, right? So, you know, I think we should welcome them to the community, they've worked very hard, and we certainly, with their energy, we certainly need, our business community needs a lot of energy, so we'll let them open up and then put them to work for civic service.
So I would, I would ask if anyone has any other further comments? If not, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I, yeah, Jack Grayton, I, I move that we approve the liquor license for, what, what number is it again? For the Sajin.
It's, it, right, yeah, just, 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 do you have the hearing notice, it's a, we would be, the approval would be for a change of location on the license for Sajin Enterprises LLC from 2729 South Main Street to 807 Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
So moved, can I get away with that?
Can, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll move, listen, there's any other comment, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Jack Grayton, I.
Corey Evans, considering I'm, there's still time that I would like to have in this, I'm going to vote nay.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Harry Thompson, I.
Great, okay, congratulations, I, we, we didn't condition it, but I, I do think that, you know, we have an expectation that this business, you know, that you'll move forward as swiftly as possible, and it has been a long time, and, you know, what we don't want is for the, and, and of course, it's unusual. for the time, and of course, it's unusual timing, of course, in this world, but the sooner you're up and running, the happier we are and the community will be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, we need to. Jim, I think now we just need to move to close the hearing. Is that correct?
You, you can do that. Different boards do it different ways. You've made your vote. There's nothing further for you to do, but if you want to take a formal vote to close the hearing, you can certainly do that.
I would like to do that. Would somebody move?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing for Sageon Enterprises LLC, transfer of liquor license, ten, twenty, twenty.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Jack Grayton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Truett, I.
Harry Thompson, I.
Okay, the hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
You have nothing further for me? Excuse me, if you have nothing further for me this evening, I'll good night and
You.
Do you have any questions?
You are dismissed and I apologize. I didn't introduce you, but thank you for being here.
Yeah, one, one second. Got to ask him a quick question.
Sure.
How does the town go about to petition for another liquor license for a full liquor license? Does that go to the ABCC and then at the state level?
Typically, it's done by a town meeting vote to petition the legislature for authority to grant an additional license and you would specify license or licenses and you'd specify what type of licenses you want to have that applied to, whether it's a package store, beer and wine, restaurant or whatever. Typically, it's by way of the town meeting vote for special legislation. And then you would have your state legislative delegation introduce the petition to the legislature and they would act on it.
How often is that done?
It's done not, not infrequently.
Okay.
I can't say that it's done all the time, but it's done enough that it's not an unusual or strange occurrence.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Let's let's definitely want to tee that up for another, for a meeting. We can discuss that. I've also been talking with Safe Harbor about coordinating an ABCC training session for the board and anybody else who wants to participate. So, Chris, we should probably talk about that soon and we can have a bigger discussion about licensing in town. Does that make sense? Okay. Great. So we are a little bit ahead of schedule, which is wonderful. And the next, next on our agenda, if I'm reading it correctly, and I apologize for earlier not doing so, is a community update. We have our.
We actually have our team all popping up there.
Our team popping back into view.
We've all been, everyone's been waiting patiently, so.
Chief Quigley, it looks like you're in a fancy hotel room.
Not quite, just my living, well, sort of my dining room, I guess.
I told him she should be doing the, she should be sitting in the recliner chair during the meeting. We wouldn't even.
Yeah, I might, I might fall asleep at this point. I've been going.
So this community update is going to focus on a couple of things, but it also blends into the next topic, the discussion of for extending the dates for spending outside, spend event permits. And any potential exceptions the board might want to consider as we go forward. So as I say that, I'll turn this over to Chief Sylvia to start the conversation.
Um, I guess where we get started tonight is kind of on a public safety update from Public Health. I think Pam I'll let Pam kick this off. It's been, as we all know, kind of expected. But because we've all started, we as the citizens of the, of the Commonwealth and the town of Cohasset, we've all started to move indoors. And the kind of what we expected is starting to happen. And when I say that, I'm talking about the fact that the virus has been sitting in the wings, waiting for us all to go indoors. And now the virus is starting to reappear. So with that being said, I kind of, kind of kick it over to Pam and let Pam give you an update of kind of where we stand on, on that front. I think that's a good place to start.
Okay, thanks, Chief. So as you probably all know, the state of Massachusetts is now color coded. And depending upon how many cases that you have of COVID. And so we've been in the gray, which is less than five cases in a two week period. I think it's going to change now tomorrow. Wednesday, every week is when they do, they crunch the numbers. They get all the data in, like they cut off Wednesday morning. That's it. Let's look back at the last two weeks. And then in the afternoon, they post the, the new numbers and the new colors and stuff. So in Cohasset, we've had seven confirmed cases in the last fourteen day period. So what that likely means is we're probably going to end up being yellow. We're going to go from gray to yellow. The next step up is red. Red is when actual changes start to happen. That means we're all currently in phase three, step two. If you stayed in red for three consecutive weeks, then you would have to take a step back. So just because you become red instantly doesn't mean the changes happen and it has to be three consecutive weeks. But if that did happen, things like capacity limits would change, like for gyms, they're currently a fifty percent capacity that have to go back to forty percent. Restaurants couldn't have bands anymore. The gathering guidance would mean you couldn't have a hundred people at a gathering outside would go back to fifty. It's things like that. And it would also potentially, and I mean potentially, impact schools. It's one one thing, one factor you need to look at. If you're a red town, then you might have to go back to remote learning. But it's not automatic. It would actually be more of a collaborative decision between the town and the state. And by the state, that would be DPH and Desi, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I think the state overall really wants schools to stay as they are, like, you know, hybrid method and stuff. And so it really would be like, you know, is there really widespread cases in schools between students and teachers and stuff. So it, it by no means would be automatic, but it would have to be talked about. So that's if things kind of kept going the way they're going right now. But as of right now, as of right this second, we're in gray, as in tomorrow, we may be yellow. And then we'll have to just see where we go from there.
Corey?
So Pam, there are no restrictions if we're in yellow, which just, there's nothing we have to worry about. And could you just repeat for me? I was just, I was trying to write them down. If we're in red for three weeks, what are the impacts for town businesses?
So if it's three straight weeks, then we would go from phase three, step two to phase three, step one. So a business wouldn't have to close, but some of the capacity limits would probably change. I'd have to go look and see all the impacts, but I know I do know for a certain like gyms would go fifty percent capacity to forty percent. I do know bands would no longer be able to play in restaurants. I'd have to like really kind of tally it all up and see across all the sectors what it would mean, but.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Paul?
So, you know, a couple of things, we clearly are seeing many more cases at South Shore. And that's a sign that it's in the community. You know, the virus is out there and in any large gatherings, any indoor sporting events, for example, there's been a couple of outbreaks in local hockey teams. I mean, if you want to make the virus survive, you put it in a refrigerator and, you know, a hockey rink is ideal for making the virus survive. So any indoor sports events, I strongly urge that all the kids, all the parents wear a mask the entire time they're in there. The only place it lives is in humans, so it's not going to go anywhere else. And from a exposure point of view, this is where we have to try to limit gatherings. Even if there's a small town gathering or a small family gathering, you're going to have to keep very, very small. I'm, I'm very concerned about the fall. And I'm even more concerned about the winter with the major holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's. Honestly, if Thanksgiving were to be pushed back to July and you have all your family saying, you know what, we're going to go to July for Thanksgiving, I would recommend that. A very small Thanksgiving is probably the safest method to keep it in control. We're, we've done great in the Northeast from, from Jersey North. We've done very, very well, but it's starting to come back. I, I think Christmas is going to be a Zoom Christmas. I think the safest way to do it is going to be get the Christmas morning on Zoom with the family and all the extended family via Zoom or via FaceTime or via the telephone. You know, this is, we, we still have yet a decent therapeutics, a decent any option of a vaccine for the near future. So it's really imperative to be limiting contacts and to try to keep it from spreading because it will, it will be a peak and the question is how bad? That's all.
Okay, anybody else want to? From our team?
I, so Chris, I think at this point, do we want to talk about, obviously, you know, what we want to get through to the public is, as Dr. Schubert just very eloquently said, the virus is on the, is on the rise. It's coming back to visit for the holidays and for the fall as we've all moved indoors. You've heard this from me so many times before that we need to stay distant. We need to wear masks. We need to wash our hands. We need to stay home if we're ill. If you have any type of symptoms of COVID, you need to go and get tested. If somebody calls from the tracing folks, you need to pick up the phone. Those are the things you need to do and we all need to do these things. So we are now starting to, to talk amongst the working group about some of the things that we might possibly be doing. And obviously, the next holiday to come up is Halloween. So I don't know if Chris, if you want to kick this piece of it off or where you want to go with this?
So I have Pam, I have Pam's quick slideshow and your long slideshow. So do we want to default to Pam's quick hair slideshow to start?
Um, sure.
Okay, well, either one of you can narrate. I'll start the, I'll start it.
Pam, are you going to take these few slides?
Um, you know what? We can skip this one, Chris, because I think Chief Sylvia is going to already talk about this one. So for me, I just thought there's a couple of creative ways. If you're a homeowner and you're, you're going to hand out candy. If you go on YouTube, there's lots of videos on how to create a candy shoot. And this is like our simplest one. This one doesn't even involve like having a stand of any kind. You just pop the candy in and come shooting out in the kid's basket. They're just tying it onto their railing. Not everybody has a railing that's at an angle. So there are videos and how you could create like little stands to do this, but that's one way. I told my dad who's an engineer to do this, try to figure it out. I think he's going to go to Home Depot and get some materials. And then the next one, just even simpler. The governor was saying you could just put your candy outside like on a tray of some kind, just spread it out and just let the kids come and pick it up. Because the thing you don't want is that big people's hands going into a bowl and all like intermingling and stuff like that. So you could just spread it out and replenish once in a while or something and, you know, reduce any kind of contact.
Chris, if you want to tee up that other one, that would be fine. And where I'll start with this is that I think we, we one slide in, Chris. There we are. Okay, thank you. So all I really want to do is to mention to the board that DPH hasn't really come out with any guidelines for us in regards to what they think we should be doing. They keep aiming to the CDC. So what I did is I went into the CDC and I chopped up basically a couple of slides that they had to try and do this very, very quickly. So two pieces to this, oops.
Keep, keep talking. I'll have it right back up.
My game. The first piece is as far as trick or treaters go. And that was that, that slide that we were just looking at is, as trick or treaters, how do you handle, how do you handle trick or treating per se? So how do we make it safer? So, so it says, avoid direct contact. That's the very first thing. And that's, this comes down to the, the biggest thing again. To stay away from people and to wear your mask. So stay away from people, give the treats outdoors. Pam's slide, Pam's candy slide is a perfect example of that. Set up a station with individually bagged treats for kids to take. That's, I know that's what's going to happen at, at my house. There'll be no interaction per se. And then for the kids themselves, when they do get home, before they start to go through their candy and everything else, make sure that their hands are clean. And then, of course, make sure they're wearing a mask. So we're going to do this real quick. Couple of quick slides here. If you go to the next one, Chris. Steps to take. And of course, you see the big six feet between people. And then the next slide is fairly obvious, wear your mask. Your mask cannot be part, you know, it could be part of your costume. But it's not a costume mask is not a substitute for a cloth or a face covering of some sort. Okay? Don't wear your costume mask over your cloth mask because it make it difficult to breathe. We don't want to see kids passing out because of the fact that they're not breathing. And then obviously, anybody under the age of two, you have to be careful of masks. So that's an understatement. So next slide, Chris. So then again, six feet apart, indoors or outdoors, doesn't matter. Even outdoors, it's, you know, you want to be that six foot spacing and wear your mask. It's not an if and it's a both. You do it. You wear your mask and you try and stay six feet apart. Within six feet for a long period of time, I don't care if you're indoors or outdoors is a bad thing. We use that radiation thing of time, distance. Well, that's what it comes down to. Time, distance and shielding, wear your mask, stay away from people and don't hang around close for long periods of time. Next slide, Chris. And then again, as I mentioned before, wash your hands. If you're going to be out for a long time, having some hand sanitizer is a good thing. Especially if, you know, the kids, kids are being kids and they're going to crawl all over each other. Again, be careful how much hand sanitizer you use with your kids. So make sure you supervise that. And again, wash your hands before you eat any treats. No treats until you get home. Next slide, Chris. Okay, so then the, the takeaways for other things you can do at Halloween and Chris is going to get to that in a minute because it says decorating car pumpkins. We'll talk about that. But these other options are options that we can all do to make Halloween a little safer and still celebrate Halloween because we don't want to take everything away from from all the kids and everything else, but there's safe ways to go about this. Next slide, please, Chris. And again, they mentioned corn mazes, scavenger hunts. Again, if done safely and you stay away from people and you take care of your hands and you wear your mask, you can do these things and still have a fun Halloween. And then the last one, I believe, last slide, Chris is again, the other ideas about doing a Halloween in your house in regards to a scavenger hunt. Have an outdoor costume parade or a movie night with your neighbors that's outdoors where everybody is separated. Is good things that you can do and, and have a safe and happy and healthy, most importantly, healthy Halloween. So that's the long version of the, of the Halloween stuff. And with that, I think you know, you, you're all aware that Safe Harbor is working on their pumpkin carving contest. And I'll kind of let Chris fill you in on that.
Before we do that, can we get those that PowerPoint sent to us just so we can push it out on social media? I think there's a lot of fun tips in there.
Absolutely.
And just to piggyback on that, the, the Pam had pulled down some posters and then Chief Quigley was able to actually get them reproduced. And Glenn was able to distribute them. So again, a team effort. And they are in the schools and they're around businesses encouraging people and stressing safe practices. Very much in line with what we just did here. So we've the school committee tomorrow night will be saying the same very thing, same, very same things we're saying tonight. Like have fun, but have very safe fun. You know, don't, don't travel all over the town. Keep it in your neighborhood, you know, keep it modest, moderate and, and we can be safe.
I, I think the, the other side of that is there are a lot of people that are nervous about people coming to their house. So, you know, you know, we have, need to think of them as well as the kids.
Now, as Pam mentioned, as Pam mentioned, there's some, there's some great ideas that are out there between the different social media sites in regards to how can you safely do this? And as I said, I know at my house, there's going to be little goodie bags that are all tied up with a ribbon sitting on a tray. And it kind of blocks the walkway so that you can stand on the porch and say hello to. So that you can stand on the porch and say hello to the kids from six, eight, 10 feet away. And they can pick up their little goody bag and, and move along on their merry little way for Halloween. So there's safe ways to do this. And that's all we're, we're trying to, what we're trying to get away from is the traditional, you know, 2019, 400 kids in any specific neighborhood. And I won't name the neighborhoods. But we're trying to get that curtailed to a, to a point because obviously that's just not safe. So the education of safe ideas for Halloween in the next two weeks is kind of where we're headed.
Great. Chris, Paul?
Yep. So, you know, to underscore the, the chief's comments about distance. The, you know, the Rose Garden event is a classic example of how transmissible this virus is. That was in bright sunlight, that was outdoors and no one, very few had masks. So it's very contagious. So if you're going to go out and trick or treat, have that quarantine bubble that your, your family or your close knit group that you know are, are safe, steers clear of the other group, that is their own quarantine bubble. You don't want to pop the bubble and then you've got spread. So it, it can be done, but you've got to be just, just be careful, cautious and, and distance, you know, there. It's going to be the, one of the few nights where everyone's going to be wearing a mask. So, you know, it, it can be done, but just be very, very careful. That's it.
Chris, you want to walk us through the pumpkins?
Well, it's this, so at this point, I think everyone has seen that Safe Harbor is doing a great job with this pumpkin contest. They've gotten great community participation. And a great partnership. So what's happening is a number of folks and I don't have the final count, but it was at the ballpark of 150 signed up. They all got free pumpkin, like a goody bag. They're going to get, they, they got the pumpkin first. This is decoration week and on Friday, there's two slots for them to drop them off and those, and those have been announced. And we're picking the local commons and they'll be logged in and they'll be distributed to local businesses in the village where people will be able to see them behind the windows. So they'll, they'll be protected. And people can safely walk around and the youth ambassadors, because have created a QR code to score. So you can, oh, I love that pumpkin and you can, you know, score it. So it'll be pretty judging. There'll be prizes. Every kid, by the way, participates, gets a goody bag, a safely put together individual goody bag that's being pulled together by Safe Harbor volunteers. And we have our facilities team playing courier. They're, they're working as a partner in the system as well. And many thanks to the local businesses who are going to display these pumpkins in their windows. So please take a few minutes, walk downtown, you know, you might see something you didn't even know was there, right? So get a cup of coffee, maybe get a taco or something, right? Pick up dinner for the family. Maybe take a look at some of the great little shops and, and please, you know, participate and, and score. So we're very excited about this. I think it'll be a great effort. I, I really, I'm very, very excited about the community participation and the great work that all the volunteers and folks have come together on. So there'll be more next week. There'll be more information on Facebook. And so, you know, plan, starting this Saturday to go out there and start scoring. So the scoring period is through, I think the middle of next week. I don't remember the exact date. I have to check. We'll be awarding at the end of the week. So it's a very exciting, it's a fun time. So.
Fantastic. Anybody else?
And if there's anything else on this area, Halloween and Halloween COVID, with, with the same team that we have pivot to the discussion of extending, of extending the date for suspending extending the suspension. So the, as, as of now, the board's date for outside events expires on October 31st. At this point, we're not aware of anyone who's pushing for a major event. That said, if we can do some safe socially distant outdoor events with the chamber and local businesses, we'd really like to be able to do that. And so the recommendation, and someone could correct me if I have the dates wrong. We're going to recommend the board extend the, the date through March 30th, which takes us into the spring. You can always rescind it if things get better. And, you know, it's, it's like, like these, like the Safe Harbor vigil, you can, you can approve events on a case by case basis as they've been reviewed. And there will be some conversation. We've been walking, and Corey can talk more about this, and Carrie about work with the local business committee to try to get some activity downtown. Again, not packing lots of people and closing the streets. But having people, you know, wander around in, in safe groups, limited access, but get into local businesses. I know there's some coordination potentially going on and off. Glenn has an update with Larry Kretzel. There's some talk about trying to get some safe socially distanced activities outside. And again, we'll, we'll see what we can pull together. The committee is very creative. We want to partner in any way we can to keep people safe and also to keep people. I think the slogan we're unofficially saying is stay safe, shop local, right? So and as a goal to try to get a website up, and I don't know how that's coming along, try to make it easier for people to buy gift cards. And I know that's something that's been talked about. So for local businesses. So there was lots of great businesses, obviously right here in the village and also up on 3A. So we really encourage everyone to remember that they are, and actually restaurants are doing okay, by the way, for the most part. But keep, keep supporting them. But there's a lot of great little shops in town. And we're encouraging everyone to, to engage. Somebody want to pick up on that, Corey or Carrie or?
Well, I mean, that's kind of economics. I mean, let's let's talk about the, the, the extending the date for suspending of permits. I've got some thoughts and questions. So.
So Diana, that's why, you know, again, unless someone else wants to add, I think, you know, taking it through March 30th gives us obviously time to think where we're going. We, we have been talking about maybe asking it to go through July, but our May. I don't know if it needs to be quite that far at this point. I mean, if Dr. Schubert says go for May, we'll go for May. At this point, I'd say we can circle back in, you know, January, February and say, well, things are better. We might be able to, you know, do something else, you know, the, the biggest event, the first events in the season are in March here anyway. And let me just circle back on the events for this fall. So the, the, the Turkey Trot that the rec, the rec race, the rec runs is, is going virtual. They've already gone virtual. So there will be no race on Thanksgiving Day. People are being encouraged to run, but do it at home. Do it, you know, and, and post your pictures and, you know, buy your T-shirt. They're actually doing a, you can buy some years that shouldn't take part. So they're trying to clean out their stock. And all the contributions for that race, and there'll be more information on that coming up soon. We'll go to charity, you know, local charities, including rec. So they still want to encourage people to race, but not here, not in a group. So no Thanksgiving Day race here. Run it, run, run before it, run after it. Don't run it on this course. Other than, and then I, I do this, the South Shore Community Center is not going to be asking for a permit for their Chicago Bill Walk. You know, there's a great concern that, you know, it's just, it's too much. That said, so, so I think that extending this to the winter, there's not a lot of events in the wintertime anyway. And again, if there's one off safe events cleared through health, we can always circle back. And have them ask the board if, if you're willing to give approval for like a one off.
Just, just on that is I know that the churches have their fairs. There's the village fair and then there's, then there's the the holiday stroll, which is a little bit different. Obviously we know more about that, but has anybody been in touch with the churches? To know about their?
Yeah. So we, we are trying to reach out. We haven't gotten any clear signals to what they want to do. And again, if, if we can find ways to help them do some outside activities. And if, you know, we, we'd love to do that. I know that I've heard that the Congregational Church which sells amazing chowder every season, looking to do that. And again, drive by, pick up chatter. That's awesome. I know that Metco always sells wreaths, my wreath from Metco. I really hope that we can find a way to have them selling it. Maybe outside on the common or someplace. So if it gets, get those. And we had a little time to build that. That said, we, you know, it's still a kind of information. And again, the church has just kind of started with people being back in the buildings. So I think, you know, I, I think it's kind of a, you know, we want to partner and help them out in any way we can. So
Right.
This point, there's no firm plans. Unless someone else does something more than I.
Right. And, and the permitted events has a, has a, you know, a quantity of people or road closing. I mean, they're bigger. And so I feel comfortable with that. You know, I just want to make sure that we're able to you know, make some accommodations. But Carrie and then Corey, Carrie had her hand up for a question.
We were just toying with the idea on our economic task force about a way to have kind of a similar to an outdoor farmer's market, but with our vendors that can include things like Metco and the churches. And we had a lot of success this year with, with our farmer's market and it was safe and we didn't have any spread or outbreaks from it. So just a heads up, we are playing with thinking about a way to do some type of outdoor fair that's socially distanced and safe. Where we can include local vendors and restaurants and the churches too, but that's all being brainstormed right now.
Corey?
I'm just wondering if in lieu of a, of a ban, you know, because it's just, I mean, we're setting a van, a ban, but then saying, oh, but we can do this. It just seems like we're you know, one step forward, two steps backwards. Can we revise that to say all of town events must be approved, you know, the, the department of health? That just seems to be like an easier way to work. Is that, is that reasonable?
That, that's kind of where I'm thinking because you put a van and then you start making one offs. It's why put out the, the negative ban? I mean, I think that there's, there's, you know, we don't want a road race or, you know, something like that, but maybe the easier thing to do is just run it through a different kind of, you know, request process. Jack, you had your hand up?
Yeah. Yeah, I did. And I, I think absolutely that we need to find out creative ways to start reopening with health concerns. Of course, they can, in this strong consideration. And I think the idea of having them require a prior health permit. And I would add, just so it's clear, that the health agent does have the must approve. She had must, she has to approve anyway, but must sense that, that signal. And if things get, if, if we have an outbreak, we can shut it down immediately. We have the power to do that. But we need to get things going forward and, and with, you know, free Massachusetts companies closed on the vaccine. We'll take all the political stuff aside. We won't discuss that. And the therapeutics that are, that are starting to be effective. We need to be looking at the light at the end of the tunnel. And, and so I think that we really should do it. Allow them with health agent approval.
Healthy, I would say health agent and board of selectmen. So the, the has to go through, through the kind of vetting process by the public safety or whomever needs to be there. And then, and then it gets to us if they're okay with it, right?
And I'm sure Dr. Schubert will let us know and know on certain terms if something's out of, out of sorts.
Go ahead, Paul. Sorry.
So, you know, I understand you, you definitely want to try to get the economy going that, you know, I'll go back to the 1918, 1919 flu epidemic in St. Paul and Minneapolis. St. Paul had very slow conservative and very deliberate openings. After nine months, their economy was pre pandemic levels. Across the river Minneapolis, it took two and a half years with absolutely no shutdown. So we have to be very cautious on this. I'm, I, I still will be very, very unsure. This, we have not gone through a full cycle of this virus yet. We've not seen the winter. And I know what the spring was like, and that was at the very tail end of the flu. Now, this is the winter and this is where respiratory viruses love to live. And I think I would recommend putting a ban until, you know, March 31st. We can always go back and revisit it. But this is uncharted territory. And if, if the ship hits a rock, it will sink. This is a, this is a novel critter out there. It's very stable in a lot of situations and it's a, it's a tough virus. It isn't, it is not the flu. It is not the, the, the flu transmission rate. It's approaching measles. And if you've ever seen measles go through a household, it works. So I, I understand you want to try to get gatherings and things like that. I would vote for and support to the 31st with the, the ability to go in individually and saying this is a safe or reasonable event with the authorization of the public health. That's all.
You know, I don't want to go too crazy on this, but I, I I agree with the sentiment of, of Paul. My, my concern, my issue is is more just the kind of marketing and the framing of this, you know, if we're, if we're going to put a ban in, I think effectively there is a, a ban, but what we want to do is spur some activity really to kind of sustain us through. And if we keep making exceptions for things that, you know, have passed muster with public safety and the health department and then with us, it, it just seems like, why did you put the ban in place in the first place? You know? Maybe there, it's just, nobody can do anything unless it goes through these, these processes that, that involve any kind of gathering. Chief Sylvia?
I just want to remind the board very quickly that a lot about what we're talking about is going to be driven by the gatherings guidance from the governor. Right now, the largest gathering you can have outdoors is 100 people. And that's because we're, as Pam mentioned earlier, we're at phase three, step two. If we go back to phase three, step one, that number drops to 50. So this, as we go through the fall and into the winter, the guidance that comes from the governor may change again. We could be back down to 10, 25 people maximum gatherings, the whole shooting match. Because that's the way, as Dr. Schubert put it, to try and defeat the virus is to keep people away from each other. The governor's comment is always the same. The virus survives because people that are familiar with each other are too familiar with each other. And that's what you need to just remind yourselves that whatever we decide to do, the governor may change this, the Commonwealth may change this by changing the rules of engagement as we go through the fall and the winter. So anything you do at this point, you may end up having to revisit at any point shortly. If you remember back to the spring, it seemed like the rules changed every week.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I don't think I'm trying to say anything other than that. I mean, I, I'm just, the question is, do you ban and then make exceptions? Or do you look at each individual? And again, we're not talking probably very much. We're talking about things that have kind of been that are going to be catalyzed from our economic task force or from the business community. And, and then we just take those on one offs and measure those against whatever the, the state of affairs are and the, the governors and the CDC guidance is at that moment. Corey?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think what you said, Dan, and to just what Paul said, I think functionally it's the end result is the same here where we're not going to approve bad things. But, you know, I think that, you know, one thing that I heard from some residents is, you know, there were a couple of events in town and, you know, the question was, oh, I thought we had an event ban. And it introduced a little bit of confusion where I think, you know, procedurally, what we're saying is there are no events unless you can get approval from the, the board of health. That is functionally what our system is doing. So I think it just makes more sense to have a, a rule that reflects what the reality of our system is. And, you know, we're going to adjust based on what the governor tells us, based on what's ready for the community flexibly. It doesn't stop us from doing that by just requiring that we, we, you get, you know, board of health approval as well first.
It's semantics, but it's also kind of messaging that, that is important. You know, with big, with big events, which we're not talking about, but you know, if we're doing a road race, there is, there is a review team that includes most of the people on at least the bottom of my screen. The health agent and, and the police chief and the fire chief that kind of get things into an acceptable form before it comes to the board for final approval. I would be comfortable mirroring that process for a couple of events that again, are, are sort of the genesis of them are to, to try to keep our current businesses active and working with the town on safe options for people when it makes sense. So I, I don't make motions, but.
Well, how would we phrase, how would, how would we phrase this? Would we? Well, Corey, what was, you, you phrased it well earlier. Why don't you make a motion?
Right. I mean, I would like to make a motion that we, in lieu of banning all events, we require that all events before they are viewed by the select board, receive board of health approval and are in line with any and all guidelines that the state puts forward. As, as they come about through, I would probably say, you know, what was the date we had before? March 1st?
Second.
Okay. Just, just a question on that, because that motion, it said the board of health approval and I instead of the board of health, which is an elected entity with specific responsibilities that we ask for the, I don't know what you want to call this, the emergency management team. Chris?
Call it the Department of Health. That's fine. The question.
I would like to. I amend my motion to, to, to require the Department of Health approve.
Okay. Chief Quigley? Did you have a comment?
Yeah, just one question. We, we have our events group, our events committee, which is, you know, police, fire, DPW, the whole, it's the large group. But maybe, you know, a suggestion on my part is maybe that anybody, you know, any of these entities are going to apply for an event, you know, it'd be vetted, you know, by health first and then referred to events. So we don't get the giant group together for all these one offs. So we don't get the giant group together for all these one offs. You know, it's, you're pulling all the department heads together um to be told no. You know, might make sense for health to weigh on it, weigh in on it beforehand.
If I, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, that we will implement it that way. Uh, in the spirit, that's just a procedural internal thing, so put health, uh, because that builds point as well, take it.
Okay, great. So we have, um, I I I'm comfortable with that. We have a a motion and a second, so I'll call for a roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Okay, great. And I I think that we're, we're all saying the same thing in different ways. And and I think we need to make this. And for some reason, if we keep getting crazy requests, for some reason, um, well, we can always revisit this and have this discussion. But I think it's a, it's a message that we're, we're not just putting the lid on everything. Um, but we're going to be very mindful of um public safety concerns. Dr. Schubert?
Yeah, I I think a lot of this is going to default to the, what we see in the next few weeks and next few months. So um, it's it's going to depend on what happens in the state and at the, at the Commonwealth level, at the governor's level.
Right.
That's it.
Be smart people, exactly. All right, great, thank you. Um, anything else on this? Otherwise, we'll move um. We'll move on. So I printed out my agenda, Chris, were we going, we're going to have Don here to talk about FY twenty two?
Yep.
Don is, Don is here, uh, and uh, the way it's, um, the way it's set up is the budget, I forget which is for, you can take a minute, whatever order you want to combine.
That's what I wondered, yeah. Well, why don't we just talk about the the budget message? Um, the draft was was shared um last week. Um, unless anybody has any um additional updates to the one that was in the packet on Friday, I would um ask for some discussion or a motion to approve the FY twenty two budget message.
I I reviewed the the uh FY twenty two budget message. And, you know, basically, I'm clear, uh, comfortable making a motion to approve it. Um, you know, it seems like we are in a very good place um at this moment.
Okay, great. And great. And again, the the budget message is really just guidance um to the town manager, to Chris, as he develops his budget for next year. And and there's so many unknowns, we we don't even have the the Commonwealth's FY twenty one budget. So, um, you know, we we just don't know. And and thus, we're going to have these uh develop, these updates from um our finance director quite frequently as as things shape um or take some shape. So we have a motion in a second. Um, we'll, I'll call for a roll call vote unless anyone has any other comments. Great.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Terrific, thank you. We have an FY twenty two budget message, and uh, we got to start building that budget. And um, I'll turn it over to Chris and to Don Piatt, our finance director, to walk us through our current or through, I guess, first quarter.
First quarter, uh, thank you, uh, Diane. Uh, Don, I have given you, I've given you the power to post things from your screen if you want to share anything. Uh, so what was distributed to all of you as we did part month is um an executive summary that I prepared, comments from Don, and then uh a a kind of graphical uh sheet, excuse me, of uh some of the key revenues and expenses, uh, a kind of a summary of the general fund, the water fund, sewer fund, and then detail sheets. Uh, in fact, we went over all of that today with a new, potential new member of the, or waiting to be sworn in to a member of the advisory committee. So uh, uh, that was a great session today.
Terrific.
Uh, Don, take it away.
So, Chris, um, I haven't really shared anything with my screen. I got two screens up. I don't know how that's going to work. If you just want to pull up the local.
I will be, I will be happy to do it for you.
Thank you. Maybe next time I'll I'll make sure I know how to use the two screens and sharing the screen on Zoom. Uh, but while he's pulling up, um, first quarter, uh, month of September continues to be going in the right direction. General fund, I'll just kind of start through with the revenue as well, Chris pulls this up. Three nine thirty, we're twenty seven point five percent of our revenue budget collected. Motor vehicle excise, when you look at the local receipts, are still down. Um, but again, this is really, uh, as I mentioned last month, due to timing. Um, our big commitment does not come out until usually January from the Department of Motor Vehicles. And tho- those revenue receipts really don't start to pour in until February and March. So that's really when we're going to really start to be able to look at the trend for motor vehicle excise. We received our first quarter meals tax, which is down considerably from last year. However, we knew this was going to be the case due to uh the reduction in 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 um restaurants and eateries being open during the pandemic. Although if we continue to receive our our quarterly meals tax at the rate we are, we will hit our target. Um, the only thing that I'm a little, I wouldn't say too concerned about, but something I want to watch is just really when our next quarter comes in, because our first quarter includes some late stuff from fiscal twenty. Because the governor pushed off the original due date for uh the fourth quarter of twenty meals tax, some of that money is probably going to be in this receipt. However, the state doesn't break that out, so I can't really parse that out to figure out, you know, how far behind, if at all, we are. So this is just going to be a another one of those local receipts we continue to monitor. Fees are down also about sixteen percent, uh, mostly due to ambulance receipts, down about twenty eight point five percent compared to last year. But again, you know, we were conservative, we reduced our local receipts estimates for FY twenty one. So when you actually look at it, year to date budget, we're at twenty two percent collect. We're really not that far off from budget to actual perspective. So again, just, I'm going to say for the third time, we're going to just continue to monitor these local receipts, which are the most variable.
From from the person, so we're down year to year, but from a budget, we're pretty right on target.
Right, yep.
Which is great.
Excuse me.
Good job budgeting.
Yeah, we did a great job so far.
It must have been that budget message from the select board.
Uh, on the good news, license and permits are uh continue to be up about thirty eight thousand dollars from last year. Um, still primarily due to building permits, so uh that's that's good news. Um, and then outside of kind of the local receipts area within our property tax uh receipts, this month, we received about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and twelve from um outstanding tax liens and tax deferrals, which these revenues are not budgeted, because these are essentially prior year real estate, personal property, liens, taxes that have kind of accumulated over time. So once a a resident pays that off, it's essentially a pure uh revenue surplus for us, kind of drops to the bottom line. So it's always good when Paul and your team collects those tax liens and deferrals. And then uh, there's usually within that hundred and twelve, uh, there's some penalties and interest on that, which we do budget in our local receipts. Uh, but that already pushes us up to about seventy percent of our budget. So continuing to do a good job there. Uh, moving on to the expenditures, pretty much the same update as last year. It's mostly, we're at twenty six percent of the budget, but due to the timing of debt service and payments and pension assessments, we're in good shape. There's nothing really out of whack with any of the departmental budget. About a hundred and thirty thousand dollars within the public safety, you'll see. So that one is probably a little bit higher, and that's due to COVID expenses, which I will, we'll talk about shortly. And then that's really it for the general fund. Um, be happy to take any questions on that before we move on to uh the sewer fund.
Any questions? You good? Okay, moving right along.
Right. Uh, sewer fund continues to be ahead of target, twenty eight point one percent of revenue collected. Again, this is piggybacking off um Q one good usage, we were up significantly from last year. Um, and so really, those taxes are due August first. So not really a big change from from last month, but that's why we're still, we're still considerably ahead from last year at this time of about a hundred and thirty thousand. I also noted user charging was still up, connection fees are still up. But again, if you look at last uh last month, we're not too far up from last month, but for the quarter, um, we're still looking good. And the expenditure side continues to be okay shape. Uh, forty six point seven percent of the budget, but again, due to timing of debt service and other payments, uh, the general expenses are at nineteen percent. So still running below target on that end. Any questions on sewer?
Yeah, one question on sewer, if I may. Um, the connection fees are up. Are we able to project um how long that's going to continue? You know, I mean, I mean, do you have things that you're projects that are in the pipeline, pipeline that you're aware of that will have a connection fee? Or are you expecting this to kind of tank after, you know, six months or something like that?
There are definitely projects in the pipeline, uh, but depending on the timing of when they, when they come to fruition. I mean, we have a big one that that will potentially come online, but um we don't know when that will happen, when the hookup, we don't collect the fee until they actually hook up and get the permit for the property. So uh, probably could be in line for a year or two.
Okay, so that number is is actual payments we've received, not necessarily projections of of what we're expecting, okay?
Right, and and I I, we've done a good job on both water and sewer, being pretty conservative with those hookup fees. But I I continue to urge both of those departments to be very conservative, conservative, just because you really don't know when the revenue will come in. Again, you can, you can have ten projects in the pipeline, but only a handful could be completed in any given year. So it's always good to be conservative there and and uh hopefully you get a nice revenue surplus in 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 a year. Any other questions on sewer?
Great, thank you.
We'll move on. Water, same thing, we're we're still ahead of schedule, uh, twenty five point five percent of the budget collected so far. Uh, we're still up over last year, about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, again, due to uh higher usage in the first quarter. Um, hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that increase relates to user charges. Uh, another fifty thousand dollars approximately related to sale of water to Linden Ponds. Um, I believe there was a question, I can't remember if it was advisory here, about water restrictions and if they then relate to Linden Ponds. And I believe that they do relate to, so if there's a cohesive water restriction, it does flow over to any of our other users. Do you want to make that clear? Um, and then expenditure side, doing great, uh, forty point seven percent of the budget collected. Again, debt service and transfers and indirect costs, general expenses are at eighteen percent. So again, uh, Waters continuing to do a great job of their conservative budgeting approach. And um, you know, it shows month after month, year after year. So continuing to do well.
Paul?
So the last major um drought we had, it dropped down the reservoir a fair amount. And one of the problems was the um, the algae and the general growth at the level, because the sunlight got in and basically had enough sunlight to grow a lot of plants. And they had to use a lot of money to uh process it and to uh filter it and things like that. Is is any of that seen as of yet?
Not from my understanding. Uh, I believe they took care of that issue and hasn't come back. Chris may be able to speak more on that than.
Yeah, I'm not sure how low the reservoir is, you know, at one point it will, it will get to the point where it's too low.
So I don't say, I'm actually pulling up the most recent report, Paul, um, for the water department. Um, the reservoirs are actually okay. I mean, they're at, they're at fifty five and forty six percent right now. Uh, at least they were as of September thirtieth, since then we've had some rain. So I expect the October report will be better. At the same time, the drought restrictions are in place, so people aren't ever getting, plus naturally, right, trees are losing the leaves, things aren't growing. So the water is is going to stay in the system, not be pulled out of it so much. Um, let me see, um. It looks like, um, yeah, it it they actually was actually seventy nine. The 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 performance this summer was actually better, believe it or not, um, despite the 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 hot weather.
Uh, good.
Um, so that's, that's good news. Hopefully, we'll not have extra expenses for their, the stuff they have to pull out, the organics they have to pull out.
Yeah, because I know if you look at Sitewich, they've got two reservoirs on either side of three A. One of them is way, way low, and the other one, they're trying to keep high for that reason, to keep having to process the water and add to the expense. The other side is almost dry, and we only really have one big one.
Yeah, well, Lily Pond is fairly good sized, then Iron River is obviously the bigger of the two. And the system is, was plus fifty percent, um, even as of the end of September. So I'm expecting we get the report, uh, early November, we should get better numbers, I hope. Um, and uh, and I think, I think I might have mentioned on the Friday update, while we we had our six straight months of year over year water use increase, the increase from September was substantially less than, you know, we were up like, I forget, a number seventy eight percent or something crazy in June, when September was like three percent greater than last year. So uh, there was a noticeable decline in the increase, which is good.
Thanks.
Okay.
So I I think that is it, uh, with the financials for the general fund, water and sewer. Um, Chris, did you end up sharing the COVID expenditure summary I sent earlier today?
I did not, but we can share it now.
Um, okay.
Let me just find it, hold on a second. There you are. Uh, the summary or or the map, the summary, we'll do the graph.
Do the summary, because then, you know, everybody could read the memo, I can kind of try to explain that here.
Yeah, I'll send that out, I'll send that out now as we talk about it.
Okay. Uh, so what I did, I I had mentioned it in the last couple of meetings, but I finally got to putting together a summary of our COVID expenses. So I I've mentioned that we've received seven hundred and fifty thousand from federal government through the CARES Act. Uh, and so this is what I've been managing myself here. We have enough, number of other grants we've received, which I'll get to in a minute. But but basically, this is a summary of the COVID related expenses, which I've been kind of considered under the CARES grant. Um, so I've broken it down into to kind of three sections, three reports, if you want to call it. Uh, the first one is from three one, the beginning of the pandemic, the beginning of the eligibility of the grant through June thirtieth, just so you can kind of see from the first fiscal year perspective where we were. Uh, so we spent through June, two hundred and eighty one thousand, broke it down by the various reporting requirements or reporting categories for either FEMA or the CARES program. Uh, so the major things that we were spending money on was accelerated telework capacity, which uh would fall under laptops, um, Zoom accounts, uh, anything related to technology, really. PPE, masks, shields, um, gowns. And then next section would be cleaning disinfection of buildings. That also included sanitizer and um the rec kids cleaning out all the, all the playgrounds, signage and communication, uh, signs everywhere. You know, you see, wear a mask, all those signs. We 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 purchased a number of uh signs for Sandy Beach and basically every park, everywhere throughout town, signage and communication was was spent. And within that also, which I didn't break it out into detail, um, because again, this is just based on reporting category, is that we also have some, some um police details at the RTF at the beginning of pandemic uh to kind of help with the social distancing as people were, you know, getting rid of their trash and recyclables. And uh apparently, there were some issues at the beginning that we had some police details to make sure that everything was going smooth. So that's been uh categorized within that signage and communication line. Uh, grocery, meal delivery, this is related to uh elders and the senior center. They had the uh school lunch program, um, prepare meals and then bill the town and the care, the the CARES grant for that. And then other is basically anything that doesn't really fall in any of these categories. And then you'll see to the right, I've broken out basically by project or uh purpose, what we spent that other. What we spent that other money on, so that, you know, the boards, committees and residents can kind of get an idea of what we've done. And just, you know, for the first, first quarter, you can see the biggest items were, were annual town meeting. And then the sewer flow diversion that had to happen due to, uh, uh, delayed delivery of the second train or the second, um.
Membrane.
Membrane, yes, thank you. So yeah, you can take a look through the different categories, I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I just wanted to at least get this, get this out there and shared through September thirtieth. And, um, so the next section, next box shows from the beginning of fiscal twenty-one, seven-one through nine-thirty. Uh, we spent hundred and sixty-four thousand. Um, and then the last little, little report just shows basically life to date of this grant. Uh, we spent four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, that's kind of run through this CARES program. One, one caveat to that, and when you read the, the memo I shared, it kind of explains this is that uh, the state wants you to submit reimbursement request to FEMA for as much as you can. Um, so working with Glenn Pratt, we've already submitted two applications totaling, um. First one was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, the second one was ninety-seven thousand, with the hope that we'll get reimbursed seventy-five percent of that. The twenty-five percent not reimbursed by FEMA will still just stay within the CARES grant. So because the uncertainty of the reimbursement and also the time it takes. So I've had colleagues that submitted their applications or first submissions back in June, they have still not heard a peep from FEMA. So, I mean, it historically is not a timely process, so that's kind of why I've reported all of these together, even though some of them may be FEMA eligible. Um, I've, I've kind of just wrote, reported all under this one umbrella.
Couple of questions, uh, my question is, is on, um, the, the schools. Are, are, are school costs separate, is that a separate grant or, or some of their costs in this?
Yes and no, so they do have separate grants, which I'll, I'll get to in a second. But, uh, the, in the first bucket or the first report through June thirtieth, we'll see PPE of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. About ninety thousand of that was related to school PPE and sanitizer. Well, between that and, sorry, the cleaning disinfection, but between those two lines has been about a hundred thousand dollars of PPE and or sanitizer purchased for the schools through this grant. Now, in addition to this CARES, I call it the CARE slash FEMA grant, just because, you know, we, we don't know what's going to necessarily get charged to what, right this second. But, um, we have, if I'm correct, we have five additional grants related to COVID. Um, the police department got a coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program grant of about twenty-six thousand. That was basically to outfit, uh, a trailer at the police department to do online arraignment. And to also buy, um, another sign, one of the electronic signs for the highways and roads. Uh, one of the ones that are on the trailer. Um, the schools received three grants. One, the first one that they got was, uh, through the CARES Act, elementary and secondary education emergency relief fund, fifty-three thousand. That, there's a number of uses that are allowable, um, you can go online to see them, there's basically, uh, that was the first grant, I think, that the state passed through, uh, to communities as this first started. Uh, but we can get more information on some of these from the school department if we want to go into more detail. Uh, they also got three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, um, through CARES for the Corona virus relief fund, school reopening grant. Now, this, this one, I have a little bit more involvement in, uh, speaking with Susan and kind of going through that grant application. Um, so a good portion of this is salaries for, um, they hired an IT coordinator. Or I forget the exact, uh, title of this person, but to help oversee the online learning. Uh, they've hired some part-time nurses, part-time, uh, custodians as well. And so a portion of this grant, so this grant only runs through December thirtieth as well. So that's only covering the cost of those employees through December and then they'll have to figure out within their budget, which, uh, through discussions with Susan and coming up with some options, I'm comfortable that they, they have that, uh, available. Uh, and then also within there's a hundred thousand for, uh, PPE signage and, and stuff like that. And then I think another sixty thousand or so was set aside for all the students that are doing the fully remote. There's a cost per student to go through that state program. Uh, I forget what that number is, but basically I think goes another sixty thousand that was budgeted through that grant to pay for that cost. In addition to those three, the school also got a remote learning technology grant of twenty-one thousand, uh, for remote learning technology. And then, uh, the health department received another sixty-two hundred dollars between, uh, DPH and I think the Mass, Mass, uh, Massachusetts Health Organization, or I think both of them actually came through DPH, but two separate small grants totaling sixty-two hundred. Basically to pay for, uh, you know, extra hours for Mary Goodwin and, um, our contracted nurse that, that assists Mary with all of, uh, the work she has to do. So in total, uh, we've received awards of about one point two million for coronavirus, COVID-nineteen related expenditures.
That's great, thank you. Carrie?
Not sure if you know the answer to this, Dawn, obviously things are a little uncertain. Does it seem like we have enough PPE for the time being, or do we see that budget increasing a lot more as we head into winter?
Uh, based on the discussions with, um, our procurement officer and, and Glenn, who's been created overseeing, uh, all of the PPE purchasing and, and the management of that, uh, we, I believe we feel comfortable at this point that we are, we are good. Um, we're going to continue to monitor this and, and figure out, um, as Glenn has talked before about the burn rate, how much we're using it. Different locations, so that based on the inventory we have, we'll make sure that we put it, put through any purchases that we need to before the end of this grant period to make sure we get in the orders necessary for, for future needs.
Great. Any other questions for Dawn on these? Corey?
Just quickly, I appreciate the update and to keep us, you know, uh, updated of things that, uh, you know, maybe we find out aren't getting approved for, um, you know, if, if we need to readjust or, or be aware of stuff. Um, I'm thinking especially if CARES funding runs out and we've got, you know, extra educational expenses, so.
Will do.
Yeah, uh, the state budget is the next biggest uncertainty, the governor announced his revised budget last Wednesday, so you're going to take a look at it. It's projecting a more than a half billion dollar deficit. Um, he's using one point three-five billion of rainy day funds to plug some of that and then a variety of reductions and, um, uh, and, um, uh, some fee things in there to try to make that gap up. The, the, the state has been doing month to month, um, the one good, the one key piece for us is that it holds state A the same as last year. We projected a, a fairly substantial decrease, so that is good. There's some other tweaks on that we have to explore, because maybe some kids that have been charter schools, uh, it's, as a result that we wouldn't have planned on. So some of the expenses there seem to have gone up, uh, that said, it's overall okay, it, it's not hurting us, so that's good news. Um, that said, you know, that as we've discussed repeatedly, it's, it's, it's the, it's the long-term fact that we're most concerned about. I think we're getting reasonably good news about this year so far. Um, the real concern will be as we enter the next few months and into the early next year, what's the federal government going to do? As, as Dr. Schubert said, what's happening with the virus, where are we going? Um, and what other impacts have they been on the economy? So something we're all most certainly taking, uh, a real hard look at.
This is the unusual time of year where we're actually dealing with three fiscal years. So, you know, we're in the middle of FY twenty-one, we're starting our FY twenty-two planning and we're wrapping up FY twenty. And so my question is, um, to FY twenty, do, have we had our certified or whatever the DOR does? Um, you know, certify our FY twenty budget and, and then also what's our schedule for FY twenty audit?
So the retained earnings and free cash has not been certified yet. One of the last pieces I'm waiting on before I close out the year was our last FEMA submission.
Yeah.
So basically this is going to give me the, an idea, because of, just to step back for a second, the process that Glenn goes through. He takes all the detail of, of what I've kept track of and all the descriptions. And he puts through what he thinks is going to be, uh, eligible through FEMA. Now, it first goes to MEMA for their first review of it. So once they review it and pass it through to FEMA, you know, we're pretty comfortable that most of that is going to go through and be okay. So the second application that was just submitted includes some June expenses. So we're ju, I'm just waiting on some clarification on what has been submitted, uh, directly to MEMA for their approval, so that I can do that final entry. And then I'll be able to close the books. Um, it's just the last kind of grant, grant reclass that I have to do, and then we're, we're in good shape. Most of the reconciliations are all wrapped up and, uh, it's just a matter, uh, finishing up this piece, which has been a bit of a bear. But we're, we're ninety-nine percent there. Um, so I'd expect by the end of next week to have most of the information being sent to the auditors. Um, once that's done, because they require a pre-close trial balance. So once I do a couple of those entries that we need, I can send the information to them. They have already done preliminary work, so just so everybody knows, back in August and before then, um, they did a lot of stuff remotely. They did a bunch of their preliminary work, um, their transaction testing, they go through expenditures. I think they picked thirty expenditures, uh, thirty journal entries, thirty receipts, thirty payroll items. And they go through their whole processing and, and understanding the transactional history and, and making sure that that's reasonable. Uh, they do a lot of pre-testing for, uh, year and payables and stuff like that, so they have done considerable work so far. Um, but once the ledgers are complete, they can really do the bulk of their substantive testing. So, uh, we're, we're pretty much there. Then, once I close, we go through the process of submitting the balance sheet to the DOR, which I should have that done, uh, probably within the first week of November. So a little behind, but luckily we're not having the, uh, special town meeting in December this year, so.
Right.
It's not holding anything up.
And, and, and just in terms of the state's turnaround, um, on certification and everything, is that do you anticipate that would be delayed from its, uh, normal timeframe?
I don't think so, because, um, there's nothing really abnormal this year. I mean, other than the CARES, but I mean, that's just a, that's a line item within one of the sheets of their report. So I've had a couple colleagues that, uh, their rep didn't even have a question, they literally got an email back saying they're certified and everything went out. I had another colleague that may have gone back and forth with the rep for a day or two, but within a week or two, at tops, they seem to be getting their certifications turned around pretty quickly, so.
Great. All relatively good news despite the, the, all the challenges.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, we'll let you go, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, appreciated.
Have a good night.
Good night. So we are at town manager update.
Okay, uh, a couple of quick things. First, uh, the town officially received notice that we've received our eighth consecutive certificate of achievement for our comprehensive annual financial report, the CAF. So we're very excited, it came electronically, um, so that's, uh, we've actually been distributing, uh, information about that. Uh, I mentioned it on Friday, uh, and we're pushing it out a little bit further this week. So we're very happy about that, again, I want to thank Dawn and Paula in particular, but also the advisory committee, Capitol and everybody else who volunteers. Obviously all of you for setting the tone and tenor that allow us to do this work. That was big word, that was big news. Um, early voting, uh, if you want, I just had it up here a second ago.
Oh, excellent.
Um, so the, the good, uh, I have too many, I have way too many things open. So I'm now struggling, if I can give me just a second. Uh, the, um, good news is that it's got, it opened on Friday, uh, here we go. So, um, early voting started on Saturday, uh, Carol reports has been very successful, we've had a good crowd, we've had a hundred times fifty people each day. I didn't get an update today, I didn't have a chance to see her, she's been, her, she and her staff have been all out, non-stop, and they will continue to be. As you can see, this is the schedule for every single day between now and October thirtieth. So if anybody wants to come in and vote in person, um, you can see this is the schedule, uh, tomorrow it's nine to four. Tonight it was up at six-thirty, on the weekend, uh, Saturday is noon to four, Sunday's nine to one. There's another late night on Tuesday, we're open to seven for voting and then, um, uh, right through, uh, the thirtieth. So, um, uh, and actually on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, there's also the last day to register, so if you haven't registered to vote, you can still do that on the twenty-fourth. That's one of the reasons that it's, uh, the polls are opening from noon to four, so you can actually come in and register, uh, and vote. So, um, once your, once your registration's cleared, so, uh, uh, and, um, there's another window that evening, you go to the police station, it's seven to nine. So there's, that's the final day to do that, uh, and, uh, I don't have a picture of it, I just went in today and they were doing work over the weekend. We have a new box, uh, much, many thanks to Carol, she pursued a grant, um, from a foundation that was helping people, you know, improve operations government. We got a new box for out front, so it's bigger than the old one, uh, it holds more, more ballots and more, everything. So, um, it went into effect, uh, uh, it's out there. And, uh, you know, feel free, that's a good place, if you get your mail ballot at home, uh, you could come in and you can drop it in the mailbox if you want, or you can drop it in that big silver, but silver and blue down. It's not just silver, it's big blue, but it's blue, so looks a little, it's, it's very different from a mailbox, but it's about the same size as a mailbox, but it's labeled, so. Uh, we encourage everyone, that's, we, there's been so many more transactions now being done that way, uh, so it's actually, uh, it's, it's actually great, because we have more. The other one lasted six years, um, people were skeptical when it went in, became very popular, and now it's become overwhelming, popular, so. So it's a great resource, so that was, uh, this is my update, so, uh, early voting, um, the new box outside, please feel free to give ballots, tax payments, whatever you need to in that box. And then, um, get your flu shot, if you have not done that already, I'm sure that all of you will go that, we have one clinic, uh, the first clinics tomorrow, it's been sold out. Next week's sold out, November fourteenth is the last one the town is officially doing at this point, that's a walk-in clinic. And, uh, and I believe there's still some slots, so you need to contact Mary Goodwin, uh, either by email or give a call and she can get a slot if there's still openings from now. If you can't go there, go to CVS, Walgreens, go to Stop and Shop, go to your local physician, get your flu shot, that's it.
Great, so I'll open it up for a selectman comment, I want to go in reverse, um, order, Carrie.
Go vote, just like Chris said, and Corey and I actually had a really interesting tour of the sewer plant today. And I'll be posting some pictures and thoughts on that, but just a reminder, I think today between that and talking about our ferry and the train about how much infrastructure matters. And how I think that's something we really need to keep focusing on as a town, and I'm excited to fight with all of you about these public transportation things. But it matters and we can't stop talking about it.
You're going to fight with us.
Yes.
Yes. Fight alongside.
All of us are fighting.
Exactly. Uh, Paul?
So three quick things, uh, first one is the pumpkin patch is open and ASP, it's one of their biggest fundraisers for the year. Uh, I, I'm, I'm sanguine that in the spring or the summer that the ASP project can potentially go forward. So go down there, get your pumpkins, give them a little extra if you need, uh, to give them money, give them some cash, give them some money, give them some help. It's a very good project, uh, it's across the town and it's, uh, multi, uh, faith, multi, um, uh, group that has been here for many years and does great work. Uh, second quick thing is the infrastructure, um, Sawyer Street is still having the gas lines connected. So if you, uh, avoid Sawyer Street during the daytime will be, uh, better, because there, there'll be work and work crews there as well as the single lane traffic as well. Uh, the, the, the third thing, talking about voting, I, I strongly recommend you vote, uh, words, words matter. I, I, I guess I was described as, uh, as an idiot, um, by, uh, someone, uh, higher up than I. Uh, and particularly one of, one of my, uh, heroes, uh, Anthony Fauci, the director of the NIAID, um, was also told to be an idiot, well, I don't believe he is, first in his class in Cornell, second in his class at, uh, the College of Holy Cross, and when I came home Monday night, I have in front of my yard, I have a honk for Dr. Fauci's sign. And it was thrown in the bushes, so, um, just, just to let, you know, all the other signs were fine, that one was thrown in the bushes. So, um, it, it's not in the best interest, uh, of the person who did that, uh, to be doing that in my front yard. Um, so I wouldn't recommend doing that again, uh, I have the greatest respect for him, uh, and the healthcare workers that are out there. So I, I guess. and the healthcare workers that are out there. So I I guess if I'm included as an idiot, then I guess I'm an idiot, but please.
Good company.
Yes, that's it.
Great. Corey?
That's out of order.
I know I'm I'm taking chair. I would be next. I want to go last. You guys have the floor. Sorry.
No, no. So just want to say thank you to Town Clerk and the whole team for the elections. This is a unique year. And, you know, people are showing up to vote and that's encouraging, but that means a lot of work for them. So thank you, guys. Your work is not unnoticed. And I'm really excited for the box. However, because we are adding a lot of more, a lot more stuff to the box. Please be sure that if you're putting in something that's not a voting material, you mark where it's going. That way, you know, it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. Those are my two things. Thanks, everybody.
Great. Thank you. Jack? You're not mute?
Well, I guess that muted me. I just want to give a little sneak preview to everybody in town that there's a very special group of younger citizens who may or may not be getting some public recognition by the select board. So I just want everybody to keep tuned and and look because it might be coming, that recognition. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Um, just just a couple of quick things. Hold on, am I?
Your video's off here.
All right, there we go. Just two quick, two quick things from Safe Harbor. They asked me to pass along and their website is safeharborcohasset.org. They have two upcoming Zoom webinars. One is called Relationships and Substances at five PM on October twenty eighth, and they're going to be talking about healthy and unhealthy relationships and, you know, substance abuse and how that impacts relationships. And then a second webinar that they're encouraging people to register for is Social Media Boundaries on November fourth at five PM. And that speaks for itself. The the programs through Safe Harbor, I mean, we're so blessed with so many great organizations and initiatives in town and Safe Harbor is certainly the crown jewel. And Jack was winking about that just a minute ago. So so we we are planning to have some recognition for some of the the younger people that really make a tick over there. But their programs are fabulous and I encourage everybody to attend. If if somebody's watching now and they weren't watching earlier because we got started at six thirty, Carrie referenced it, there there is a proposal to significantly cut MBT cert MBTA services on the South Shore. The rails and the boat, including really possible elimination of the boat from hangham and hull. We are going to be on this as really a primary advocacy initiative from the town and and encourage anybody in the community to reach out to us or go go on social media and find the various groups around that are looking for public input. So stay tuned on that. We are meeting next week. We're going to have a conversation about regional sewer amongst ourselves and 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 just in some other business that we need to take care of. And lastly, Carrie and I participated in the Wemo. It's Women Elected Municipal Officials webinar conference to our conference the other day and it was, you know, it was very inspiring. There's a lot of great initiatives. We spent a lot of time and it's something I would love for us to have a conversation about in a public meeting, but maybe not as part of a regular select board meeting about some of the limitations of Zoom. As wonderful as it is, and it's great to have it, you know, people can pay attention. I can go to more meetings because I can have it on in the background while I'm doing other things, but it it is tiring and and sometimes it 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 sometimes it's good and sometimes it's bad. And we talked a lot about that. We talked a lot about dealing with racial issues and and how to move those initiatives forward in communities. So all of those are in our goals and objectives and we'll be addressing those going forward. And then to Paul's point about, you know, where everyone is under enormous stress in their in their lives. So I just encourage everybody to be as upbeat as you can. Be kind to people. You know, we're all struggling to some degree and everybody's working on overdrive to make sure that we create as 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 healthy a community as we can. So I thank you all for for your role in that. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Jack, right and I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.